This conference will now be recorded.
Good. Her name wasn't wrong, but in today's generation it might be.
Stay around, yeah.
That's wrong. Problem.
Well, that it out.
Everybody good?
All good. You got it. You're, we're there.
Daria.
Daria.
Now, I'll just break your meeting table up, city commissioner for you. Shannon, roll the call, please.
Mayor Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Trigillo.
Here.
Mr. Gandy.
There.
Mr. Voe.
Here.
Mr. White. Here.
You will do on the side of the kitchen, Mr. Gandy.
Do you bear with me to pray with me? Heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you tonight, or as we do the city's business. Lord God, I just pray that you would be with each commissioner as we try to do what is right for our community. Lord God, I just pray for your hand of wisdom upon each commissioner. I pray for your hand of safety upon our first responders. And Lord God, I pray for your hand of grace upon our citizens. Lord God, I just pray that you be with each person that is in here tonight. Lord God, as we have different ideals and different directions that we could come together as a community and go a direction that will be pleasing to you. Lord God, I just thank you for the differences we all have. And sometimes they are a struggle, but Lord God, that's what makes us who we are, an image of you. Lord God, we just thank you again for the beautiful weather we've been having. Lord God, we would ask for some more rain. It seems a little dry, but you will bring plenty when you see fit. Lord God, again, I thank you for this wonderful community and the place it's placed in. We have many things going for us, and Lord God, I just pray that you would continue to be with us as we go through this time. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Do you want to pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag, the state of New Mexico, the zeos symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Maybe. Are we recording? Do we know? We are. Thank you. Yes. All right, we're going for a motion.
Sir Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for approval of the agenda that has not been...
No correction.
No correction.
We have a motion second for the approval of agenda as written. Any discussion? Shannon, roll the call, please.
Mr. White, yes. Mr. Gandy.
Yes.
Mr. Trigillo.
Yes.
Mr. Voe.
Yes.
Yes.
Sir Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for consideration of minutes of February 27th, 2023.
Okay, a motion second for adoption of these minutes, approval of adoption of these minutes. Any discussion? Shannon, roll the call, please.
Mr. Trigillo.
Yes.
Mr. Voe.
Yes.
Mr. White, yes. Mr. Gandy.
Yes.
Mr. Voe.
Yes.
All right, thanks to our commissioner and staff report. Shannon, do you have anything you'd like to bring to us?
Um, I'll be discussing the opt-in ordinance and the extra items. So that's all I have.
Good, thank you. Ms. Espina?
Um, Commissioner and Mayor, I just wanted to let you guys know that we did, um, during budget carrying last week with all the departments, we'll be submitting some adjustments later on. And, um, I did check on the audit report. She said that they have till April 30th. That's all she would tell me. Yeah, so just kind of wanted to give you some information on that.
All right. Thank you.
Dean. Mister Mayor, Commissioners, Mister City Manager. Several weeks ago, our coenforcement officer took an extended leave of absence, and it is beginning to look more and more like she may not be coming back. The city manager authorized me to hire a part-time temporary coenforcement officer. That person started today. She'll need to be trained, so we ask your and the public's patience for coenforcement issues and operation cleanup while we train our new officer. It was Miss Laura Gervin, right there. You're amazing. Second, uh, last Friday, we published a picture on the police department Facebook page of an officer assisting with his school safety day in Texas while in uniform. The question arose as to why she was doing this for Texas school while on duty. The simple answer is she wasn't on duty. She was doing it on her day off. The question then arose as to why we have an officer living in Texas. So to set the record straight and in the interest of transparency, I report the following. The Levington Police Department currently has 23 sworn officers, of whom three live in Texas. Yes, there is a policy that take-home units remain within a 30-mile radius. However, an exception was made during, under, under the previous administration allowing an officer to live outside this radius and in Texas. I cannot be expected to enforce this policy for some officers and not others. I will tell you that many surrounding agencies let their officers live in Texas and take home their units. Lead County Sheriff's Office, Tatum Police Department previously, and JAL. The Eddy County Sheriff's Office lets their officers live in Lead County and take their units home. It is a way to attract and retain officers. Our three officers who live in Texas have an average of 10 years law enforcement experience each. These are senior quality officers. We are not recruiting rookies who live in Texas. So my answer to the question about additional fuel costs is this. The total fuel bill for the Levington Police Department and Coenforcement Department's fleet of approximately 25 units is approximately $70,000 per year. So let's say for argument's sake that the three officers cost the department an additional $1,000 in fee per month, and that's just a round number for argument's sake. That's $12,000 per year impact to our bottom line. My solution to this is not to punitively tell officers they need to drive their own vehicles to go, to go out and find funding to offset this additional cost so that we may retain our talent. And the example of this is the $286,000 in funding towards salaries, recruitment, and retention over the next three years, which we just received from the state of New Mexico. These funds obviously more than offset the extra fuel bill cost. I will continue to seek outside, outside funding for anything I can, since our officers make an average of $6 less per hour than our competition. And I will creatively try to incentivize them without impacting my bottom line. We, of course, would like all of our officers to live locally, but this is just unrealistic. I will tell you that many of our younger, newer hires are Levington born, raised, and live here, and this is where we direct our recruiting efforts. And I have one agenda on the evening this, uh, on the, I have one item on the agenda this evening which has to do with us joining the lead program, and Ms. Jess, along from the lead program. We'll speak on that later. So if you have to stand for any questions.
Question. Standing judge chief.
Thank you for your input on this issue. We do not want to further.
Of course, yes.
It's a very competitive environment.
Oh, so Laura, I'm thinking.
Party.
Mister Mayor, members of the commission, so I have to agree with Chief Miranda. I as well have an employee.
Yeah, they got a horse.
I have a 150-mile living radius, however. So my guys work, of course, shift work, and they drive their own vehicles, but at the same time, you have to get them where you can.
Why didn't you shut up?
The first thing I have is, uh, I have one new hire that did start today.
Very, very.
Kid, 19 years old. Straight out of high school. He's eager. He seems really good. Has a bright future. All the lights in our station, we have finally got them replaced except for four.
You tried to scam me.
The ones that were broken sit back. We have ordered new ceiling tiles for the station as well. It's gonna be a total toss. Total cost is about $27,000. Those tiles are 40 years old. They're breaking. They're stained. I mean, it's just upkeep that the building is needed, and we are a fine genius. We have finished reviewing and updating all the department SOPs. We got that done. And right now, I'm not approving any burn permits in our fire district at all. With these winds, even if you think your fire is out, we, we had the pallet fire, which was a prime example. They got through burning by, uh, 2:00 on a Friday. And that Sunday afternoon, when we had those real strong winds, of course, the fire still in the pit was still hot, even though it was two days since they had burnt, started fire, and with these high winds, it's just, to me, it's not worth it. And so our numbers for February, our total EMS, we had 204. Then facility transfers, we had 32. Airport transfers, we had 12. Refusals DOAs, and Kansas, we had 27. We had 11 table calls and 24 fire calls.
Oh, you did?
I gotta, I know last week we talked about having an outside source to our fire. And I know that you said that, uh, we've got a kind of drawn up with, um, I wonder how we're progressing on that.
So right now, I'm actually waiting on a callback from Mister Friesen. He is working with one of the insurance companies to make sure they can get a liability insurance before we proceed. So that's, that's right now, uh, his.
Oh, getting us.
That's right. I did talk to, as a matter of fact, just last night, Sunday night, so. Maybe none of his response.
Okay, we appreciate you keeping with me. I'll shoot one.
Me, I'll fight you. I'll fight you. I'll fight you right now.
Thank you.
Rest in peace.
It's hard.
Don't break.
Break.
No, I just want to say.
She got a knife.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Voe.
Oh, I had a forest to do this. Go to Habs, buy you groceries, things like that. No. No. And I know I repeat myself. I'm a, as far as, but I won't, it's not local, he local. But I do myself. We do ourselves, uh, and I appreciate it, helping people do that, help our small businesses, our businesses, and loving them. Means a lot. Means a lot to help out the businesses that are here. We don't want to have them disappear on us and, uh, keep, uh, taking care of our small businesses. Appreciate it. Thank you.
But I need to get my.
There's no reason to repeat, so we always encourage you to.
I probably will, because I feel very, very passionate about it. I feel passionate about loving them. So I'm gonna come out. And I know I make it a point, I always couple the stores I go to. If they don't have it, I'll ask them if they can order it. It takes a couple days or whatever to get it. I'm fine with that because I'd rather keep the money here, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Yes. I'd like to, uh, bring, bring the attention to Crystal and the city manager. One, one thing I'd like to see in the future is if there's any change or with, with this road project, this, this entire board agrees, if it's, if it's immediately or if it's emergency. But right now, the last time we talked, it was a three-month gig. Now it's a six-month gig, and I think it's only about seven months, but all that time we're done. And the upsetting part is because we all, we have a time frame, and I can understand 30 days, wait five days, but it's got ridiculous, you know? And I think that, oh, I feel like we're getting to take advantage. Uh, it may not be through the state. It might be through the contract. I don't know who it is, but, uh, we just need to stand our ground for now on, from this moment, from this point forward. We're staying, we're sticking to the schedule. And, and what scares me is that if they're acting like this on Avenue B, what are they gonna do when it comes to Main Street? You know, it was supposed to be 800 increments, uh, and that's why we're ready to do it. But now, you know, we stressed and we gave them that, that ability. They, uh, they faulted on themselves. I'm not, I'm not budging. You know, we didn't do it right. Do it to the plan. They laid it out. We had plenty of, uh, of, uh, public input with it, and, uh, everybody agreed, everybody bought into it. But they failed us, and I'm not gonna tolerate it. So, uh, it's, we're gonna be firm. And we're not budging. I just want to take care.
Okay, so any change in the contract on the NMDOT Main Street project? We can actually, we're, we're advised on it, but it is between NMDOT and the contract.
Yeah, no, and I, yeah, and I understand that, but when we gave them permission to go ahead and draw that out a little bit long, uh, that intersection there, they said three months, and then, and they said, okay, if you guys go ahead and allow this, we'll go that.
They do have a paving meeting the other day, so maybe this.
I just don't want them to see that they took advantage of the steering, then it hit on Main Street, and that's gonna really affect all the businesses. We wouldn't have, we wouldn't have some big reach, you see? Because right now, two of them. One year. That is one year right there. One year, and that's not even about a quarter of a mile. And it's one year, and it's like, it's ridiculous, so it really is. And it's tearing up our streets. A year, it is. It's tearing up our streets bad. Yeah, we are paying the price.
So what's the, 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 the name?
Commissioner White.
Um, thanks for fixing my light. I moved it over to the wooden one, so we're good. So, thank me. Actually, we cut it. I just got out there and they just care. They do a good job, so I'm happy. If you have any other issues or anything that you see, I mean, all, all the right people. We're not the only thing I have, so they changed the LEDs, so.
Even better. That's right.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
City manager. Mister Mayor.
You wanna cut it yet or wait?
Session. First time it's down for your questions, that mayor, town, and the commission.
Weird.
It's weird, uh. Thank you. Ms. Box.
Commissioners and Mayor, um, like I said, I did go to a paving meeting with the NMDOT and Portrazine. They do plan on starting the paving within the next few weeks. The intersection of commercial going into the timeline and that, that intersection and that portion worked because of the old storm drains, all of our sewer and water lines that are in that area.
Why he didn't get it to go?
They are not quite 50% of the contract, kind of the entire project. Uh, but the biggest course of the project.
I don't know why he didn't get rid of the stuff.
So hopefully, we're, we're not going to start moving to a more standard.
You're selling or what?
But I, I do, I do have a problem with everything I go to with them trying to get it, go show them.
Yes. Mr. Gandy.
Go ahead.
I had a quick question. I know that I've heard people earlier, but, um, hey, since I had a, oh, yeah, constituent asked about the, the parking over there at the, uh, new courthouse. Can you explain that to us again, because, um, you know, I was unaware of that, and I was just kind of.
Okay, so the parking was in, people run the required parking for the square footage. In black.
550 horsepower.
And then the overflow parking is what they put in just to help. Which they did not have to pay. Would've been nice if they would. Of course, that would've increased our parking deck price. And we were trying to stay within a budget on that.
Yeah.
Why not?
I don't know where you're. Yeah, that was.
And that was well, up in Main Street, which still, again, that.
We, we beat around the timeline. Having spoken to you, um, obviously, they're not gonna give a specific date to what, where we could possibly live.
Oh, you did?
I have a calendar. I have a paving date that they said that start.
No, please. The only way I can run is off my grid, but, and they come up.
None of my, in NMDOT, you guys.
They're just like, man, it's like.
Yeah, John, absolutely.
In the back.
Can't see me.
Yeah.
Good evening, sir. I'm sorry, Mr. Roberts, and I have a mission. Um, so Crystal was correct on the assumptions about the project, so, um, as being a project manager, I work with them on a daily basis. Looked at commercial last year and the intersection of 83. Um, it was brought to my attention that instead of just doing half the road and coming back and doing the other half, they asked to close the intersection. Um, now that was before winter hit. You know, we had, um, winters, weather, rain.
Oh, wait, there's all of that.
All that affects. I believe through November, December, and January, there was, we had, uh, out of the three months, we had, we only had two team working days. And, uh, so, and, and like I said, the contractor didn't, to my attention, we looked at, uh, things, uh, frozen down, or what you'd be done, uh, that didn't come frozen down. I, I guess the decision that we made to shut that intersection down.
I was happy.
More, I, I. The work was incorporated before our prime contractor.
Oh, no wonder.
They've always seen the job. Um, the unforeseeable storm drain, existing utilities. You know, um, our PDs, our, our design engineers, um, they're accountable for a lot of that. The, the, our system that they're putting in for you guys is gonna, is gonna help out against them in the future. Um, but they are on schedule with their fresh releases. I, I was out there today looking at everything. Um, most of the storm drains, they're starting to backfill. Once they get, um, everything. They should start. Crystal said, they're, they're on schedule. I'm out here every day now to make sure of that, so. But, and the issues on, on Main Street are.
This is not a crack. I, I use all the. No one ever.
So we get that intersection, and, and they're just gonna do the intersection to get it open, and we continue down. Um, Avenue, well, uh, the Main Street intersection. So, um, that's where it's at, so. Yeah, I can answer any. Commissioner?
Okay, uh, hang on. I've, I've got one, and then I'm gonna. Oh, okay, there was Paul, and this was from Plan B. That there may be some problems that had to go, we had to go back and readdress. Uh, have there been resolutions to those problems instead of going backwards?
I don't know.
We can, we're gonna be proceeding going forward.
Uh, yes, we, we've had, like I said, there was unforeseeable elevation changes, and we, you know, some of the mammals we hit conflicting, uh, water lines and storm drain. Um, about 97% of that is, is done. I have a couple of mammals in there that, um, our PD is, is redesigning right now, but it, it's not really holding them back. They're gonna work around it. And once that decision is, is come to, and I'm, I'm hoping that I can get that tomorrow, and we'll get those knocked out and get it done.
All right, I'm gonna reiterate my question. Okay, something like around the timeframe? Like, I mean, that commercial may be open. Um, we're looking at, um.
Even when you're doing with not possible.
We're halfway through March, so. Yeah, and I, you know, the, the winds have a big thing. We're, we're looking at temps. We have some bad weather coming again.
Sure.
Sunday, Sunday and Mondays. But, I mean, I'm, I'm at liberty to grant these guys what they say. Really can't do much work. It's not worth it. Been a while to get a little bit of production in, in the days with that going on. And now with the time change and everything, um, I, I need to see everything going on scheduled. All right, I'm gonna open for a public comment. Please understand that everybody is definitely wanting to open and privileged to have the, the stay here to answer or make a comment back, so. Yes, Ms. Kip.
Is there a way that we can talk to you sometime? Cause we've got parade routes coming up for, um, the Barrett Romeo and then also the Fourth of July. And we need to, our parade routes usually go that way, and we're having to reroute anything. Is there any way that we can get with you and maybe get some kind of a time frame on those?
Yes, I, Crystal comes out to our meetings once a week, our progress meetings.
Can you tell us whether, what time and where?
Um, 10 o'clock on Thursdays, uh, on Main Street at the, um, I'm not sure the address. It's constructed in a appropriate building, more to the flower shop.
Oh, glad you do. Yes, okay.
Anyone's welcome to come in and, and have an opinion, and we'll talk about that.
We've been talking about our parade routes. We need to get that done.
Right, we've discussed that. She's given us all the routes and what we can really help out.
Good. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Any other? Seeing none. Thank you, sir, for coming this evening. I know it's not a pleasant topic, but we appreciate that you're coming and giving us an update.
You're welcome, and, um, I can just park out if you want. If you call me anytime. It's a 24. 24, the 24 hours.
He's been very responsive.
Ladies up here. That would, yes, that would be great.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Good job. What a good job.
I've been trying to get a group up for a while, but you've gotta help me out here.
Not a problem.
I do try, and I do try to stay on top of the parade route, so if you have a specific time, I can actually get with the instructors in and take that time to reach them. Okay, and so you guys want to get that to me, because I do, I report everything we're trying to get done, uh, because we also have to think about the different detour routes and everything for, for their benefit. So as soon as you can, any information like that you can get to me, I can always share it with you. We can do that over each, this week.
Will they be closing all of Main and D when they do that?
That intersection.
100%.
Yes, that's why I don't know why he isn't such a big person, open that.
Cause we're never gonna get done.
I know.
If we don't. Sure. I know there's a great deal of frustration among our citizens, Lee County citizens. And if we push this back another couple of months, there's gonna be a lot of anxiety about Lead County depending on the Barrett Romeo, so, anyway. All right, well, thank you, Crystal, for, uh, asking our, uh, state engineer to come in. Any other questions? Ma'am, counselor.
Uh, just briefly, had the chance to take a look at our, our second, I'll be able to settle on that. Um, this is with, uh, being also chief. I think we've got coffee ready for Saturday, uh, later this evening.
Mayor already took care of it.
Oh, perfect. So other than that, don't have anything else that's new? Be happy to stand for any questions.
Seeing none. We'll give you tomorrow night, that you're prepared for the rest of. That's right. Uh, I have nothing to say anything except I appreciate the public. We've got packed house tonight. I'm sorry. Guess we got a little overflow outside, but, um, we're always glad you're here. Uh, we appreciate your comments. We appreciate, uh, we appreciate your attendance and your involvement in the city. So, uh, that brings us to our public comment time. Uh, at this time, if you have a comment, please press the podium. Please state your name and, uh, then speak what you would like to know. Go ahead, and we'll try to keep it brief.
Yes. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Julie Liddy. I'm standing before you and the public to announce my reservation as an executive assistant, a position I've held for the last four and a half years. And I have held it through city manager James Williams, interim city manager David Rodriguez, acting city manager slash mayor David Trigillo, a new finance director, a new finance director, a new finance director, and a new city manager. All of this turned over, and I held this position to do that. A position I self-taught myself to learn, but I'm here today because the decision I made was not something that I wanted to do, but from something that was forced on me, a decision that was forced about me and my position. I'm here to speak on this because I requested a formal grievance about this decision and was denied, and was told that it wasn't a demotion because my pay was attached, even though on the handbook it does say demotion is responsibilities and pay. And I'm allowed that grievance, but I wasn't given, so I requested an informal grievance, and I was ignored. But I'll get to the pay part of that later. I then request, I then requested an informal grievance. I then requested, I then requested an informal grievance, and I was ignored. So that since the City Manager did not want to hear from me about this decision, I stand before you and the public to speak about it. On March ninth, twenty twenty-three, City Manager Martinez called me and City Clerk Lester into his office. Like he has done many times before, there's not much discussion that morning, just a hi, how are you, before the statement that has been playing in my head over and over came along. And all this was said was, I am making position changes, you're under Crystal. That's it, nothing else included in that statement. I was then told my pay would not be touched, even though my responsibilities and my positions, my position was changed. But wait, I was told I was sought to perform the duties of the executive assistant and continue to do meeting minutes and agenda and train the new person. My pay was not touched, but I was going to have to do double the job. I brought that concern up, and I was just told it's just for a couple of meetings until we get higher new receptionists. Again, that receptionist I'd have to train, continue to do double the duties. I asked why this decision was being made, and the only answer I got was, Crystal needs help, you can learn something. No further discussion about it. I told him I would think about it, and I went to my desk and I wrote my resignation letter. I submitted to the City Manager and City Clerk while they were still in the meeting thirty minutes after I got done. He came out to my desk and he told me you can't resign. I'm not accepting, I go home and think about it. But my decision was that I was not, I could not work in this position I was being forced into, a position I had no desire to be in. I requested my formal grievance been settled later that day and was denied, because he's not touching your pay and it's not a demotion. But if he didn't feel like it wasn't a demotion, why was it automatically brought up that he was gonna touch my pay? I had not asked for that. He just said it. He's putting me in a lower position than mine. That's a demotion, pay or not, my responsibilities, my title was taken from me without say so and without any discussion. It's my understanding that in the handbook, the City Manager is allowed to transfer positions of an employee. But would it not be fair to discuss these, this transfer with employees as an everything for the city and for the City Manager? I'm not some new and inexperienced employee, so I deserve a discussion about this. But again, I was denied and I was ignored. I was an executive assistant who has written all the extensive letters to the Maddox Foundation so that the city can get their grant funding and checks from Maddox. I'm the one who submits CES procurement processing because no one else knows how. I was the one who had control of the city website, no one else knew how to do that. I managed the live broadcasting of city meetings on YouTube channel, and we must upload meetings to the YouTube channel. So it has been brought to my attention that it will say that that's no longer needed and they won't be done for anybody who goes back for YouTube meetings. I submitted capital outlay funding requests for the city this last session. I did it with no direction and no assistance. I did it myself so that the city can get capital outlay funding, and I did those requests by myself. So would it not be fair to grant me informal or informal grievance? Would it not be fair to discuss this decision? It was also brought to my attention, not to me, that he stated that it would be good for me to learn and I'm the only one who can help this department. But if that was, but it was never directly told to me. It was circled back to me from others, discussed. He discussed my personal information with others, and that's not okay with me. All I was told was, I'm making position changes, you're going under Crystal. If I was told what everybody else was told, if I was given the conversation, Jaleen, what do you think about this? Jaleen, how about this? This would have been different for me. I spoke on the facts about this decision, but I still want to speak about the emotional damages it's caused. In my years of service to the city, I've never received a regiment, verbal or online. I've never missed a deadline, I've never left any task, especially when it comes to commission and City Manager, attended, unattended. I started this position with many tasks behind, and I came back from eternal leave with many tasks behind, and I caught those up. Nothing was ever outdone because of me. There are times I had to be off work due to illness, family matters, vacation, and I'm allowed that, but my tasks have never not been completed. I ensure that not only the duties of the City Manager are attended to, but every other department as well. I've assisted City Clerk, although she's not present. I've assisted multiple departments with multiple tasks. So now I was told that I'd be devoted, because again, this is what stripping my responsibilities are for me, a demotion. I felt that I, the work that I've done to the city has meant nothing. I was not given a true reason for this decision other than for. I felt like I was never a good employee to this city. But that, again, that was never discussed to me. If my work was not done properly or was wrong, then I deserve a discussion instead of automatically putting this decision on. And City Clerk, who's also the HR Director, was not the mediator, she should have been there. HR Director should hold the city's best interest, including the employees, at heart. She had nothing to do or say or help in any way for this matter, manner to go smoother for me. She then went on to request that same day for other employees to call up former employees because the city needed somebody who can handle this position. And the city did have somebody who can handle this position. But again, they were forced out. So all of these emotions of experiencing, why was I not good enough to say? What did I do wrong? What can I do better? They have all been tearing me apart since then. I believe the treatment that I've been given has been unfair. Discussing my personal information with other employees who are not HR, including one who is a commissioner, is not okay with me. The day after I was told I was being forced out of my position and the day I gave my resignation, the receptionist and administrative assistant job description was emailed out to all the department heads and the City Clerk. I found out through colleagues, I didn't find out because I wasn't included in the email, I have no idea why. I was still in part of the city, but I wasn't included. But the best part of this advertisement was the pay. The pay was being advertised for thirty-five, forty-five thousand dollars, which is notably more than what I was making. I wasn't given a raise till late last year, so I didn't even reach the thirty-five thousand dollar mark after taxes. You can request my pay until the public, it's open for the public. And it's, it says forty thousand, but I never got to experience that, because again, my raise didn't come till late last year. And it took me this long and this much dedication and services to get paid that much. And somebody who's inexperienced gets to come on board and make thirty-five, forty-five thousand, somebody that I have to train, I don't think that's right. I mentioned again, I self-taught myself, and I barely reached thirty-six thousand dollars before taxes last year. So yes, the position I was forced out of was being advertised for more than what I was making. I was going to have to work with, train, and be in the same building with this person who's taking this position for me and is making more than me, and I would have to be okay with it. Why was I not offered more for doing double duty? For doing the duty of the planning and zoning assistant and then executive assistant until we hire somebody new? Why was I not given the opportunity to stay and get more money? How in the world is this seem fair to force somebody out and then advertise this position for more pay? This gives me reason that there was, this gives me reason to believe that there was another true reason this decision was made, and I'll never find that out. The City Manager, this commission approved to hire, treated me unfairly, and I will never know the answer as to why. I was never told my performance wasn't satisfactory, I was never pulled in his office to discuss any of my performance, I was just forced out. I had goals of one day being the City Clerk for the city in Lovington. In fact, on Monday, three days before this, I spoke with the City Manager regarding this goal. We talked about how close I was being ready. Now courses aren't option for me to take. Three days later, that goal is no longer available for me. I have goals to better myself in the executive position, that's not a chance I get to do anymore. I mentioned all of the major tasks I did, to house a fair and force of individual out, then deny him a formal and informal grievance, then advertise the position the day after and for more. When you discuss evaluation tonight, ask that you think about the safety and the employees and their jobs. Think about them not having a safe place in the city, though, when needing to discuss some concerns regarding pay or duties, just like I was ignored and denied. We do not want the City Manager fired. He hasn't notably done great things to help the city move forward, but we do ask that you guide him to do better for these employees, because they are the ones that have helped on through everything the city has been through. They are the backbone of the city. I truly hope the best for the city, be great for you guys, and all the decisions you made to help move the city forward. I pray for you tonight and every day after. Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, all my former coworkers and citizens for letting me serve you. I enjoy my time, maybe I'll try another time to do my time. Right now, I'm blessed, thank you.
Yes. You know, we, Deanne Kendron, the treasurer of the Chamber of Commerce. And then we came up here excited about starting our adopted spot. I need to let you know that one of our board members lost her husband this afternoon. We lost a big part of our community, Dr. Cecil Hawes. Had a massive heart attack, and so if you could, please keep Claire and her family in your prayers, because they're gonna need them. And he's, she's a big part of our community and he is too, and this is gonna be hard. So kind of a downside on this for the, for our adopted spot program. But the adopted spot program is gonna officially be launched tomorrow. We are excited, we've been working on this for a long time, and so tomorrow, the packets are all ready and they're at the Chamber office, and we'll have a map put up and we'll have areas. And what we're doing first is we're targeting Main Street. So when people come into town, you know, that different businesses that want the spots, you know, those, those areas will be taken care of first. We're targeting Main Street first and then our outer streets, you know, that are being detoured through by Seventeenth and things like that. We are working close to the city, but I want to read what our, what our goals are. This program has been set up to help the city of Lovington maintain and keep its properties steadily pleasing, so everyone can enjoy our city. The program is being facilitated by the Lovington Chamber of Commerce, working hand-in-hand with the city of Lovington. Each spot will have either one or two signs, you know, how many signs you want, you can have, stating which business or person, person is adopting it. A lot of people have had the misunderstanding that to join the chamber, you have to be part of a business, but actually you can be an individual, and we have lots of individuals that are chamber members. What is the dues for those?
Uh, fifty dollars.
Fifty dollars, fifty dollars a year to join the chamber as an individual. To participate in this program, you must be a chamber member. The cost is a one-time fee, the cost of the signs, a hundred dollars a piece. Sam Ruggery has done, is gonna do those wars, and all of them will be the same, they'll all say, adopted by a Lovington Chamber member. And Norley Hospital has already wanted that strip in front of the hospital in that median. Lee County has already reached out to us and they want those spots on the courtyard, you know, there's the courthouse, and they want to be able to take care of those. So there'll be signs there, you know, saying that. So at the bottom of the sign, in the big letters, it'll say Norley Hospital District or Lee County. When I first came up here and talked about it, Chuck Jones had followed me out the door and said, I want to do this, I want to do this. And he was all, all excited about being a part of it. So I told him he got to be first, since he was the first person who had talked to me about it. So other than those two, Chuck gets to be the first one to pick his spot. And Commissioner Trillo is gonna take the front part of City Hall. So we've already got people wanting to take care of this. Again, because the cost is a hundred dollars for the, for the signs, when you sign up in the program, it will be a one-year that you'll be responsible for the spot that you've adopted. So it's year by year. You know, if you decide you want out of it, you just, that, that year you're out, you know, and somebody else can have the opportunity to adopt that spot. It's not a lifetime commitment. Any landscaping changes must be approved by the chamber. And we're working hand-in-hand with Crystal, she's given us the size of the signs that we can use, and also with Jason. We formed a committee, the chambers forming committees for these different programs that we're doing, and so he's, he's, him and I are the committee so far. We, we think we can handle it. So if we need one, we'll get it, we'll face it. So anyone volunteering for the program will need to sign a release of liability to be kept in the chamber. And we got that off of the city's website. So Ashley is available to be keeping folders and keeping up with all of that. So people working that are volunteering to do that will need to be signing those waivers and we'll keep up with that. We are so excited about launching this program. I think, you know, the, you know, I've always said the chamber needed to do more for the businesses, and this is gonna give the businesses an opportunity, you know, show that they're invested in the community and helping in and doing things for the community. The maps will be up at the, at the Chamber office, we're gonna have them mounted up there, and we'll have pins and name tags on each pin, you know, with who's, who's adopted that spot, and we'll keep up with it that way. And so anybody interested in adopting, adopting a spot, please come and talk to us tomorrow at the chamber, it's ready to go. So, you know. Commissioner Trillo, how long have we been talking about this? Maybe four or five years? We have, we've been talking about it for a long time, and so I'm excited that it's getting launched, although we had some bad news tonight here. You know, we were excited about this, and again, please be with Claire also and her family, because this is gonna be a big loss, not just to her, but to our community. He was a big, he was a great part of our community. They have stopped by the news today, so if you would take, take your, our Vice President in your favor. Any questions for the Commissioners that we can ask from anybody else? No?
You're doing a great job.
Thank you very much, thank you guys. Thank you for listening.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, I am Walter Antuarez, previously cemetery supervisor. I am here today to inform you all and the public of my resignation on Monday, March sixth, twenty twenty-three, and reasons behind my decision. On Friday, March third, on my day off, I went into City Hall, planning on talking to HR, which was my direct supervisor and City Manager Martinez. My supervisor, which was also HR, attempted to notify him, and she was told from my understanding that if I wanted to talk, I needed to email. So I did, as he requested, and sent him an email. I felt the email to talk, you know, with City Manager Martinez was needed, and that I deserved to do that. However, he didn't have time for me that Friday morning. On Monday, March sixth, I asked HR if there had been any discussion made from City Manager about my request, because I had not received a response yet. She stated that City Manager Martinez said there was nothing he could do about my concern. I then requested again to have a meeting with the City Manager about my concerns. But he was in another meeting at the moment. I was told he would be notified that I wanted to meet with him and that a time would be given to me if he wanted to meet with me. So I gave him some time, I called around three P M. that day and spoke to HR, which was my direct supervisor, and asked if she had heard anything further, because I still wanted to meet with him. She told me that he did go in and ask if I had turned in my resignation. At that time, I had already realized he didn't have intention of meeting with me. So I did turn in my resignation. But my direct, my direct supervisor Shannon, or HR, HR, still told him that I wanted to meet with him to formally discuss my concerns. I was told that the City Manager questioned HR, Shannon, why does he want to talk to me if he's putting in his resignation? There's no need to, it's fine. I believe I made fair enough attempts to meet with your City Manager, and I felt he was avoiding me once he knew about my concern. On Tuesday, March seventh, I was then called to City Hall by Shannon, as she is HR and my direct supervisor. I was being notified that she was sitting with David Miranda, Chief of Police. I was informed I needed to bring my keys, city phone, and iPad to City Hall. I was told that the City Manager decided to place me on two weeks paid administrative leave for the remainder of my time, and I was escorted out by Chief of Police, not being a threat to the city, to the employees, or the public. I was escorted out. I did not receive any reason why this was done, except that I had informed that I had contacted Commission, but I did follow my check command. I made my decision mainly because I wasn't even worth discussing to him. I wanted many employees and supervisors that played important roles for the city, and if you can't meet with your City Manager, what message does that send to the rest of your employees? A simple meeting and discussion with the City Manager may have resulted in a different outcome for me. From City Manager James Williams to interim manager David Rodriguez, to acting City Manager, Mayor David Trillo at the time, I have always been able to talk about any issue and come to a solution. I believe Mayor Proton, David Trillo, knows that personally. My career with the city has ended now because I wasn't worth a simple conversation to your City Manager. I would like y'all to look back at all the people that have left and continue to lead because as a manager, you all have chose for our city. I love my job, I love my coworkers, and all the community that I had was blessed to me and served through my time. So tonight, in discussing Mr. Martinez's evaluation, please think about us all and what he has caused for us emotionally and financially and the decision we were forced to make because he wouldn't give us the time of day to speak to you. Thank you, Mayor Commissioners.
Commissioner, does anyone have anything to? Well, I'm gonna make one statement, and sorry I'll scare left, but I would like to thank our city employees for their service. But I would like to thank uh our city employees for their service. Um Jaylen, since you're still here, uh I want to address you. You know, you took a rookie Commissioner and newly elected mayor and you you helped me through that time. Uh when I when you and I spoke, I asked you don't make a rash decision. So uh I appreciate you took the time and then went from there. But again, I want to thank the, thank you for your service. I'd like to thank publicly Oscar for his service and we regret that we are in this position, so. Anyway, with that, we'll be moving on. This brings us to our non-action items. Discussion of the Lovington Pool and Splash Pad. City Manager, who is leading that?
Mr. Jason.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice back. How about that?
Mayor, I'm sorry. I'm getting outside information. Sorry about that. Go ahead, sir. I'm sorry.
Mayor, City Commissioners, City Manager, um I got a couple quotes from pool. Uh the first quote that you're gonna see is to fix the pool. Um the second quote is just for the electrical, from beater pole to pumps to the the pool building. It all has to be fixed. And then uh on the backside, it's gonna be a couple of uh pictures. Uh one's gonna be a roof pan, one's gonna be a shadow line, and one's gonna be the the pump roof.
A little over. Somewhere around five forty-two, five.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question? Uh Jason, on the first quote, is that just the pool itself or?
I I do believe I still have to.
This was um the damage that was done and then remember they came in afterwards and they tore out some electrical wiring and every those boxes. And that's what that secondary I guess on over there.
No, trust me, it's here because of the situation, stuff like that, so. And then on Splash Pad, uh they're fixing to come out Wednesday and Thursday at eight thirty in the morning. Um I invite you guys to come out there. This is progress on that.
Mr. Brown, sorry. Uh this week they will be here?
Yes.
On what specific date? On this Wednesday, Thursday?
Yes.
In the morning?
Yes.
And what is what what are they?
Uh they're gonna be revamping the whole thing. When these things fix, it's gonna get fixed and we'll go from there.
So they're doing repairs?
Yes.
And what is the timeframe uh operation?
Uh shoot the ASAP. Because we gotta get that up and running. Uh this Friday, me and a couple guys went out there and we cleaned up all the horses uh to the spray nozzles and stuff like that. So they're all clean. Tomorrow, we're uh pumping out all the dirty water from storage tank, put clean water in, so that'll be up and ready for them five Wednesday.
Okay, so eight thirty tomorrow?
Uh Wednesday and Thursday is gonna be eight thirty.
I didn't, Jason, it just, I didn't want us to report to the public that that Splash Pad will be fully operational by May of one. Hopefully sooner, but I'd like you to test it. And then have and then hopefully they're gonna uh give you some sort of maintenance uh plan for it. I maybe make requests that if they had already worked. That way, I always say something that that stays idle. I know they would just turn it off and leave it off until April and then go and take it on, find out they had this and that wrong. I think we need to take it on every month, you know, and it's just like a moment where you just gotta turn it on and then you just gotta turn it on.
And I do believe from the CPO class that I did attend to and I think it's certified for that, there is a winterization process to go along with Splash Pad, just like pools and spa. So there's gotta be a checklist for the winter. There's gotta be a checklist open and so we'll get all that put in place.
It was reported earlier in a previous meeting that um and I guess it was from this company, Quite Cool, that if they didn't start by a time, they would not be able to get to us this this year. That's what I was thinking. So we are we are past that.
Yes.
So even if we contracted with them immediately, we would we wouldn't have a pool this year. Just wanted to verify.
Yeah.
If that's the way I understood it.
And what I can do is get another estimate for the complete pair of all of the pool.
Yes.
Mr. Gandy, okay, brilliant.
I have no problem with that.
Oh, I'll work on that. I'll work on the the program for Splash Pad, polarization, checklist.
Commissioner Trillo.
I'd like to see also a cost analysis of of Splash Pad in the different section part of the town. I mean, we have we have one on the south side, something on the north side to where we could have where public access, easy access. And what like a cost analysis, what if we can spend five hundred thousand to fix a pool? Is it better off just to, I I just wanted to do some sort of statistic on it or something just to say it maybe would be more cost-effective, more economically feasible if we went ahead to build another Splash Pad instead of spending five hundred thousand, there may be five hundred thousand to purchase another Splash Pad. No labor costs, just a little utilities and maintenance, you know, versus uh being out there and and uh, you know, having to get lifeguards, utilities year-round, security. Uh it's a big liability when it's just left there, especially where exactly you can go swimming. And we may end up having an accident. So I I'd like to see something like that.
Okay, yeah. Um I know that Splash Pads are much safer in pools. Uh there's no standing water, nobody can really drown in them. Um they're switched in, some of the cities are switching the pools to water playgrounds, so it's like a gigantic splash pad, so.
Yeah, the reason I I'm against the swimming pool is first, it's a huge maintenance cost every month. Second, off it's an area which we have huge vandalism problems and different things that would cause the causes our maintenance to go up even more. So and then you have the uh, you know, past history of we built it on a dump site. So, you know, there's multiple reasons why I see that the cost of tearing it down. Now granted, when what the, what do you call that? Quality of life, yes. The dimensions are quality of life, but the cost is more than what the city can bear. It's always been a versatile thing, so um it's always been a sore spot for me. So the Splash Pads, I don't really have a problem with those. And for the money that we could probably spend putting the pool in, we could probably have multiples at every park and different things like that, I would assume. But um with the cost of materials and labor and everything going up, it's a direct, it may not be as feasible as we think. So but um, you know, luckily we have the the pool at the Wellness Center, which serves communities, not pride, but swimming and different things like that to keep our children. So but as far as the city maintaining a swimming pool, I I don't think it's one of the wisest things.
I know the pool and Splash Pad, you know, it it's just more of a, you're on the cost out.
And even even over the limited months of usage, parties and pools, we never recoup the money and it's a constant.
Yeah.
It's a drain on the cities.
Now, Splash Pads are very less than a pool, but you still have that cost back.
Yeah, you can probably operate three or four different Splash Pads. Because it was, I wanna say it was like ten thousand dollars a month.
Plus, if you could maybe see about having these Splash Pads, like you said, at individual parks, so.
And that would that would.
That would, you could maybe have a Splash Pad at, I'm not gonna say each park that we have, but at numerous parks that other people from that area could enjoy that Splash Pad.
Right, right.
You could do one at Avenue D Park. You could do one probably maybe with the one over there off of uh.
Old Street?
Old Street, yeah, that one. I mean, you probably wouldn't want to do one on the triangle over there by the Lee School. You know, that the Pope Street's not too, a couple more blocks. So, I mean, it's pretty convenient. Don't want to say, the only area that really doesn't have a park in our community is the south side. Yeah, you're you're outside of town. I don't know what you are doing, but.
I'm saying if we could do that, you have multiple parks, it could be beneficial to the community.
Yes. Any further questions?
Uh I think I just one final note, and it's just way out of our part on this, is that uh the facility's nice out there. I'm talking about just the bathrooms and the just the building. So just like Commissioner Gandy said, just fill it in. If we fill it in, you know, it could be nice for overnight RV parks because you got a lake out there. So maybe we could eventually make it an uh overnight RV park because we need people that requested uh the good sands and so forth that, you know, come come in and they can have their whole group stay there and got a good fishing hole to go to. But that facility can be utilized in something like that, so just to make it outside of the box.
And just because I'm gonna have to lock up coming softball fields, doing people that uh just seem to be amusing to the equipment we have.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, uh Jason, what we can do is the meeting on Wednesday and Thursday. I know you're gonna collect additional information, but if we could present at the next commission meeting to let the Commission public know the results of both Splash Pad and.
Okay, and I can also ask for an estimate for a water playground to replace the pool. So if you would like that.
Might as well, it's on the way.
Your meetings are where?
Uh it's gonna be at the Chappell Park at Splash Pad Department, yeah.
And any uh Mayor, Commissioner, if you, if anyone wants to join us that day, that's that's fine. Definitely get to hear what they have to say. I'm curious to find out exactly what is the problem. Why is it become a, it's 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 an issue. It's been an issue. And what we can do to fix it, right? I know last time it was parts, yeah.
I think it's just trying and management. I think that's all of that's.
Anything further for Jason? If not, um I believe we have uh our normally administrator, David Shaw, that would like to speak on a I don't know, I don't wanna say alternative, but another opportunity.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh Mr. Trillo asked me to be here tonight and I provided you with a document. Talks about all the services that we provide with our pool. Uh one of the things we're most excited about, the picture at the top, is the Lovington Swim Team. When we started this, I think we had six that tried out for the swim team and now we have a pretty large group that give kids in the community an alternative uh sport that they can participate in. Uh we provide swim lessons um twice a year. I think we've had over thirty-five to forty participate in swim lessons. These are young kids. Uh in the past, we worked with the summer school and provided swim lessons for kids that involved in the summer school, different things like that. We we currently are open for lap swimming from five to nine in the morning and five to nine in the evening. The uh swim team uses it during the day and it's open for aquatic classes in the morning. In the past, we were asked to open up in the summertime uh for the community and we're happy to look at that again. I just want to let the Commissioners know that just like everybody else, labor is a problem and we have a real shortage right now of lifeguards, which you'll note there in the bottom left-hand corner. We have a an individual coming in March to put on a class to certify lifeguards and we're hoping to fill that class. We've been advertising with the school district and uh on social media. Perhaps they'll assist us in getting the word out. Uh because if we're gonna open it up for the community in the summertime all day, or at least for the same hours that the local pool was open, we're gonna need several more lifeguards, probably five to six more lifeguards than we currently budget for. But we're happy to try to do that for the city and we'll be happy to present, you know, more details about that at your next meeting.
I mean, yes, Mayor, uh yeah, I definitely agree that uh I I personally say that we need to continue to support Norley Hospital's pools. Uh in means of also if if we need to budget in lifeguards, I think it's it's vital that it's a team. When when we started that project, and I won't say we because we bought into it, the city did. I think we need to continue and that's if we were to do help offset any type of small cost because just like we stated, it's it's more economically feasible for us not to have our pool. And uh we can move some of that revenue towards a facility that is uh, you know, something that that the city is proud of and and we need to continue to keep it strong and supportive. And I appreciate you doing your part last year in making uh schedule changes just to accommodate the young children that want to go swimming and I applaud you for that, Mr. Shaw. Because uh I felt bad, you know, because we weren't able to provide a pool, but yet we stepped in. And I appreciate this year you also doing the same. And I think we as a board uh and the community need to support that with uh some lifeguards or something.
We are indeed blessed to have a community partner with Norley Hospital and we appreciate the services that you provide. And uh we are certainly in this particular realm. Uh when we talk about quality of life, you know, we have to talk about there are always costs associated that we don't uh re uh that we don't get back. But we have to have these services in order to uh to give our citizens additional activities and additional areas. And we appreciate that you, that your group continues to offer that. And we will help assist in any way we can. So hopefully we can make this work, prevent those. And again, we thank you for, we thank the hospital district for uh being such a good community partner for us.
I appreciate that. And I want you to know that we're the envy of most rural communities throughout West Texas and New Mexico. The most rural communities don't have anything like this. And I'm always asked, how did I convince the city and the school to partner and do this project? And we just have great, you know, relationship and partnerships and that's the key. We appreciate the city and the school district in helping us to put this together for our community.
Any other questions, discussion? David, thank you so much and we really do appreciate it.
Very good. Thank you.
Any further discussion on our Splash? Not an average action items or now some more motions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to for approval of ordinance five ninety-six, an ordinance amending or modifying classification of six lots of land located at four twenty-one East Madison Avenue, legally described as Block One, lots twelve through seven, College Edition, to the City of Lovington, Lee County, New Mexico.
Where? And we have a motion to second for the approval of this ordinance. Who's speaking on this? Are you or Ms. Ball?
And Mayor and Commissioners. So we advertised this ordinance. This was the uh zone change that was done back in two thousand and nine and never it was approved by the Commission and everything, but it never got a resolution or the ordinance tagged along with it. So that's why we did that. We did the advertisement. So now, since the advertisement has went through, it is time to just approve the ordinance and be done with this. Yes, she is here. If you guys have any questions for her, but I mean, she spoke at all the other meetings, so.
And got it approved?
And got it approved, yeah.
Any discussion? If not, I think it's long overdue. And we'll call over, please.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Trillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Dean?
Sticking with the same bow, no.
No.
Mayor Roberts?
We are shocked. Yes.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero two six, approval of advertised ordinance five ninety-seven, ordinance pursuant to NMS N, you know, S A nineteen seventy-eight, section one dash twenty-two dash three. ordinance pursuant to NMS, N, you know, NSA nineteen seventy-eight, section one dash twenty-two dash three point one, like, two thousand and eighteen, to opt in for the election of municipal officers for the city of Lovington in the next regular election.
Sure. We have a motion in second for the approval of this resolution. Uh, any discussion? I believe Shannon will answer any questions if there are some from the commissioners.
So when? So the, my term would typically end the third, the twenty-four. Now it would end the first of twenty-five.
That's one option.
Which option? Option one, your term would end twelve thirty-one twenty-three. Under option two, your term would end twelve thirty-one twenty-five. One short, is it one year?
So.
So the end of this year or two more years?
God, no.
Okay, the, what, this, this uh, particular resolution is just to advertise.
Right.
And then when it come after the.
Right, well, we gotta make a choice on one, so which are, what we're.
Not tonight, though. That's, she said, she stated that it will be when we go to adopt it, then the motion will be to adopt one of the.
Okay.
Did I speak that correct?
Yes.
Any further questions, discussion? All right, Shannon, go ahead.
Commissioner Dean?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Commissioner Trivio?
Yes.
Mr. White, Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh twenty-seven, approval of a memorandum of understanding between the Lovington Police Department and the Lee County Law Enforcement Assisted Divergent Program.
We have a motion in second for adoption of this resolution. Chief, are you?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners and City Manager, Ms. Jessica Owen of the Lee Program has joined us from Hobbs. Just wondering if she could step forward and maybe just, I know I've reviewed it with you in the past, but she could go over it. She runs the program and possibly address any questions you have.
Hello. Hello, Daddy. So, the law enforcement assisted diversion program has been, uh, been in effect since October of twenty twenty-one with the police department. And we are now standing out throughout the county to have Lovington PD join us if everyone approves that you. Also, the sheriff's department has joined, the uh, U N S Police Department in New Mexico stations. Program is, um, rooted in harm reduction for low-level nonviolent offenders who have substance use disorder and the other problems. So this program is focused on law enforcement. They're the ones who, the officers are the ones who are trained in leading and work for individuals into the program. And what we do is they, they have a screening form and there's this reliability criteria. And they review it, check their background, and if they qualify to get into the program, they can, they can divert their charges, refer them into the program, or they can also just socially refer them as a law enforcement officer. I'm sure there's probably a handful of individuals you have in mind that might benefit from a program like this. So it, it is also helping the police and the community to see officers go and approach these individuals and let them know how to offer you some extra help, maybe call the case manager to come and help you. We've just, we've seen a lot of success as far as, um, just interaction with the community and with the growth of our program. And we also have an evaluation team for the state of New Mexico that keeps all of our data collected and provides us with those monthly reports that we're able to, I would be able to come back and provide those reports for you.
I would just add that they do track the number of referrals. It, this is not just a loose affiliation. It requires buy-in from the police department. As previously mentioned, we have two senior officers who expressed an interest in trying to work this program. Uh, I believe they're federally funded for another three years, so they're not gonna go away tomorrow. And it's not gonna cost us a dime and may be an opportunity to help some of our more troubled people that we see wandering the streets every day that have a lot of problems, but don't really cause a lot of harm to themselves.
I know, I know we don't have a lot of information. Do we have like a success rate of five percent, twenty-five percent, seven-five percent?
The success rates, it's, I wouldn't, we don't have the numbers. Our evaluation is only showing back for about a year now, I think. So there are, there are other nationwide diversion programs, uh, diversion and diversion programs are becoming something that law enforcement agencies are adopting. I recently went to a, to a summit in Chicago with HPD and there were over three hundred agencies there, first responder programs, law enforcement agencies were adopting diversion and diversion. So, um, they're, they originated in Seattle. I know they have some statistics about why, always email those over. Um, we do have a, a live statewide lead site now, the website, and in lead.org. And so if you go, you can click on it and show you each, each lead site in New Mexico. And um, we also, for so far, our, our lead program has the highest enrollment percentage in the state. And that's due to our case managers and our officers working so closely together and being able to make those more handoffs. And that has, that has driven to show that our, our enrollment rate is, is successful.
I think the Hobbs Police Department refers one or two people on to the program. It, it's a little bit radical in the respect that it doesn't require abstinence from the people in the program. But anyone who's dealt or been around drug abusers knows that the road off of drugs is not like you just stop and.
Right, right.
Relapse. But other programs in the past have just thrown you away. If you relapse once, you're done, you're out of that program. So, I don't know if it's gonna work, but it's something different. We feel it's worth a try.
How do you actually approach individuals that you feel that needs help? I know you both go up to them and say, hey, we need help. How do you actually do that? You know, I know that you said that you refer them.
It's when we come into contract, a contact with them, there's very strict parameters about who we can uh, refer. There can't have been a crime involving a victim, so no murder, no rape, no batter in a household number. But let's say it's a low-level property crime where the victim or the store owner doesn't wanna go to court. Those guys probably just gonna get probation or the case is gonna get dropped. But he has to sign off saying, you know what, this is a good candidate for, for lead. And you know, they have a drug abuse problem. And they literally are on call twenty, twenty hours a day now, right? It's soon to be twenty-four. They will come from Hobbs up here and they call it a warm handoff. But it allows the officer the discretion to basically kind of forgive a felony offense, drug possession, or maybe a burglary of a store.
Now, is the person that, let's say that we're talking about incarcerated at the time? Or is he out three that?
It's usually done before, it's, it's done at the point of contact. So, they haven't been arrested yet, but they're guilty of crime, probable cause, you know, you found the drugs on them or they were found at the scene. So, it's, that's why they call it a diversion. You're trying to keep them out of the criminal justice uh, system, but at the same time get them some help. It's, it's a new concept, but it's had a lot of buy-in around here.
It's a pre-arrest diversion program. It's uh, it was also recommended by the trainer, who can be trained in the state, to start with social law enforcement referrals, so that way law enforcement officers can just, just get the bill of progress from case managers, understand what it is that they are doing, as far as their intense case management. And we only had, out of all of our, from all, we had two arrest diversions in the past year now. So that shows, most of them are, are social referrals from, from a law enforcement officer. And it could even be after an arrest. They still feel like they wanna help someone afterward because that was just something like, say, that, say the, the property victim didn't want to let that go, well, then that officer can still refer them to provide that for us. So, there, there's several different aspects to the program. It's all at the officer's discretion. Everything will be at their discretion. Their case managers meet them and they just go get up.
I've already tried, I've already tried to refer two young people who are neighbors of mine. Hooked Doug Fenton, um, they're on probation for uh, commercial burglary, but ultimately they've got one, two. We're trying.
You have a question? Uh, Ms. Owen, thank you for attending tonight and thank you for informing us. I think no questions, discussion, Shannon, go ahead.
Commissioner Trivio?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes. You're on a roll.
I've got one there.
One, I'm gonna do the last one. Uh, resolution twenty, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh two eight, approval of a contract with Pedigree Associates for LED lighting at the baseball and softball fields.
There we have it, motion in second for adoption of this resolution. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners and the Commission, let me just go back, give you a little bit of historical background. When we first started this process, we went for RFP. Said the best thing to do is get it out there, see if we can find anyone that would submit a bid. So we, working with procurement, Melissa, we went RFP. We didn't get anyone. No one submitted an application. All right. We do have a hundred thousand dollars from the Maddox Foundation for softball fields, but that's specifically for softball fields. Then we have a hundred and fifty thousand from county and a hot, approximately a thousand from Lee County, Atlanta. So we do have funding, all right. So since we did not receive any bids when we submitted the RFP, we decided the next round would be CES. So we reached out with a company in Hobbs, electrical company in Hobbs is called.
Kirkmeier.
Now, when I, when I spoke to them, they said, you need to hire an electrical engineer. I said, what is that? They said, all right, so here we go, we gotta hire an electrical engineer. Um, there was no one locally or, uh, I mean, a lighting, sorry, did I say electrical?
You said electrical, yeah.
Sorry.
Lighting, love it here.
Lighting, sorry, I heard someone laugh over here, so I, I, I knew I made a mistake. Okay, uh, lighting engineer. And so I reached out to David Royball with Pedigree and Associates. And I, I told him, look, we're, we need a, a lighting engineer. So he's subcontracting. And um, we had a Zoom meeting the other day, so here's the situation. Based on their analysis, so we're looking at softball field has how many fields? Four? Four at the softball field and then the baseball field is three, correct? All right. They're, right now what they're telling me, it's gonna cost two hundred and fifty to two hundred and eighty thousand per field.
And we put steel poles with concrete bottom?
The problem we're running into in the baseball field is we have those wooden poles. In the last four months, we had one fall on top of one of our buildings. And we had another crash the other day, correct, Jason?
Yes.
And so what's happening to those wooden poles, they're not, there's not, there's no concrete. So anytime we have bad winds, the poles are just, it's outrageous. So the recommendation is to replace all poles, both softball, baseball, replace all the poles with steel poles and concrete. So this proposal that's in front of you is just for the planning and designing. And it's a total of, let me see, yeah, the, the, forty-five thousand five hundred. This is just to plan and design both baseball and softball. Once we have the plan and design, then we can look for additional funding. But our ultimate goal is to replace all the poles and lighting at both baseball and softball. Out there, that's our goal. But again, price tag is about two hundred and fifty to two hundred and eighty thousand per field. Now, that includes the poles, steel, the steel poles, concrete and the lights. So that's where we're at. This is how I stand on any questions that Mayor and Commissioners have.
Same cost going with you wooden poles as needed or whatever? And then when we get more funding later on, come back in, we just still like phase it out? Or we can just do this field and then that field and?
Commissioner Trivio?
Yes, uh, I'm just gonna ask, Evan, can you come to the podium there? We've got plates on this, but. No, no, wait, stop there.
Maybe, also.
Okay. So, I, I'm just gonna, I'm just curious. Do we need all, all the fields? The only reason why I said it.
Baseball.
Ba, uh, baseball and softball, what I'm saying, if we had the total amount of fields, do we need the total amount of fields for the season? Or can we make the season longer and utilize four fields? Or, 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 or for the better fields instead of investing in seven fields that we only use for two months out of the year?
Um, it's a good question. I'm not doing it, I'm not doing it anymore. I've retired after sixteen years.
From, from your previous.
Um, so the lighting has actually been updated as it's gone throughout the years. I know in the last, last year, um, Chuck has been out there and he's replaced some strong power electric because that has replaced lighting. So they have been replaced at the baseball fields. And they were replaced at the ones on love and the ones on commercial. So the lights have been updated in the last two years.
The third housing and they wanna go to.
Yeah. But they, I know that they had to redo wiring, underground wiring that was burnt, so they re-went above. And so that, this has happened in the last two years.
But through your experience, the season's only like two months.
We have fall, fall from the eighty.
And what, what I'm saying is that you have X amount of fields that you're only using for two months out of the year. We're fixing to invest two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I'm saying, can we make, can we, can we get four of the best fields or five of the best fields and, and put, uh, you know, invest there? Make the, stretch the season a little longer. And now, now we're less maintenance with seven fields. You know, I always look from a cost standpoint. Are, are we, are we doing, are we utilizing our assets to the max? If we're not, then we're throwing money away. And that's what I say, just for instance, this season.
You only use it for two months. You technically sign in March, you have your season starts end of April and you're done by June. That's the typical. But I do know that, I know in the past they wanted to go in the fall and they wanted to go in the spring. But not only baseball goes out there, you have football that's out there, you have soccer that's out there. So there's multiple sports that the, that they're using these complexes for. And for baseball purposes only, the only, the major and the minor league field would be the only fields that I would do. The senior league field, you don't even have enough kids to make enough teams.
Yeah.
Kids, which is thirteen through fifteen, the only, it's worthless to even do it because you have thirty kids.
Can we throw a color in on that field if we start that again?
Um, well, I do know uh, that there's a men's league that's using it on Sundays. I do know that. But, but they're just one day of the week though.
But it comes back to the same question. Are we utilizing the fields like to the max? You know, and if it's seven, like, we're, we're investing seven foot maintenance, money, everything in it for twelve months out of the year. Why aren't we just utilizing five fields and investing five beautiful fields? And then not invest for the rest. I, and I think it falls back on management. And, and not, uh, you know, Dr. Martinez, what I'm referring to is management and managing their program. It's been managed, but everybody has their own way of doing things. But nobody ever takes a penny into factor of it. And that's why the cost has been outrageous. And that's why I think we've never been able to service this because I see we've got more parks than we do people participating. And, and uh, for two months out of the year, spending two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and, and just two months and all of a sudden, we got like, Mr. Gandy, so we've got vandalism going on. Uh, we need to have cameras out there, we need to be more security. I don't know, I think we just need to make a big assessment on, on, on how we're gonna spend it wisely and do it, want to do it wisely.
And you are gonna need security out there. I mean, the two months that I was there, they did break in twice. Uh, the, the, the ones on Love Street, they broke the hinges off twice. They've stolen all the merchandise from the ones on Commercial Street. So it's, it's, you always have kids out there and even now, like, uh, I've had the police department call me multiple times that the doors are open on the sheds that are on the outskirts, on the, or outside of the uh, baseball fields. But those are not ours, those once upon a time could be footballs. But there's graffiti, they started graffiti and everything. The bathrooms are, were two years old and they broke the seams, they broke, and they were two years old. I mean, it's, nothing's done. That's why it, it's been rough, it's been rough.
And I think because we've been niggling, diving, everything.
And it is.
Yeah, and then if we just concentrate on a set of ball parks and invest in a set with security, with lighting, with, with nice facility and then the other ones, you know, we do something other than what we've been doing because I think we're probably, we're probably uh, stretch ourselves to death with eight ball parks.
And they do, I mean, in baseball, there is four hundred and fifty kids that sign up.
Yeah.
There is a ton of kids that sign up for that. May not the older kids, but you probably need to focus on T-ball and kids that are in the five and six. If anything, you should invest on the ones that are across from the park. Those are the ones that have the most teams, those are the ones that have the most kids. Those are the ones that have the most teams. Those are the ones that have the most kids. Instead of the ones on Love Street, the ones on Love Street, you're only utilizing two of the fields. And it's not as much, it's probably about a hundred and fifty kids, but the rest are on the ones in front of the park.
Can you say the one on Love Street? Are you talking about the ones by Avenue G, F, whatever it is?
Yeah, the ones behind Wolf Park.
Yes.
Yes. Those are the ones where the older kids are at. And that's where you have the nine, nine-year-olds all the way up to fifteen-year-olds. But you're only utilizing two of the fields, but the ones across from the park, Chevron Park, you have five and six-year-olds and seven and eight-year-olds, but that's where you have the majority of your kids playing. And those fields are not good. Those have a lot of go roads.
Yeah, I just think we need to make a better assessment on what we plan to do.
And then we have a really good turnout on flag football and on softball and soccer.
Team soccer. Yeah, I know that originally they weren't going to have soccer out there and the fields out, the softball fields were in better condition, you know, running wise. There was a lot of holes over there. So I do know that they moved the majority of its all on that side.
And I think it goes back to management. You know, if you've got two months of baseball, you can have that, you can manage it under five fields. You know, say, we're only going to do five fields. We're going to manage it and the season's going to be longer. And I think that's just the route to go instead of trying to do eight fields. And niggling diamond, just to get them on.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know, you can't use correctly if I'm wrong, but the baseball and softball, the guys and the ladies, the fields have to be separate. The diameter is right, the diameter.
Yes, the length from the, from the pitching.
We have eight fields, but like Commissioner Treel said, we can't just put every one in a, no.
No, but you can, but, but your bases, you can redo your bases. You've got one hole per softball and then you've got one hole per, so you just move the base back.
Well, Hobbs hasn't, so the turf fields, there's anchors around the floor and they move their bases depending on. They move their pitching further back, but there's anchors at the bottom that you're able to move your stuff. And they have, in Hobbs, it's used for men and women.
Yeah, that's what, that goes back to management.
Dr. Martinez, this resolution is for the approval of a contract with Pettigrew and Associates for LED lighting at the fields. Is that for implementation or is that for coming up with a proposal, this forty-five thousand dollar contract?
The plan, yes, sir.
The plan. I know it doesn't say plan. It says for LED lighting. I want to make sure that we're, we know what we're voting on. So it is for the plan. Because we can have the plan. We don't have to implement the total.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Commissioner White, I'm asking Dr. Martinez, and I would like him to answer the question.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, you are correct. This is forty-five thousand, let me see. Forty-five, that's something else. Forty-five thousand five hundred to plan and design.
Yeah. So I think that was, I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
No, and I think the mayor has a point. They just want to pursue this and then we can make a better management decision on where we're going to implement it. So, yeah.
Anyone have a question?
Thank you. Let me just add on the, on the baseball field, we're working with County Electric on a new transformer. So I know Crystal, we, the guys are working with her on the curb bin to get the line and so forth.
Yes, I'll be bringing that to the next meeting to do the easement for Lee County Electric to the new, to the baseball for the underground stuff. So I will be bringing that before you guys soon.
Okay. Any questions or further discussion? We are clear that it is for forty-five thousand something dollars to create a plan for all fields. Then we will evaluate how we're going to proceed. Correct? Okay. Thank you, Eric. Any further? Shannon, go call the office.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Yes.
Yes. Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Say we pay the bid?
Yeah.
So I'll be sending the bills. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
The vendor one four zero six five change health near LLC.
That is.
I don't see the address. I just want to know what.
That's the building. So they get a percentage, every month, however much we collect, they get a percentage of that. And then we have to pay them every month.
The one right underneath that, CN Electric, vendor one zero five zero six. Says street electrical work on building. What building are we talking about?
I believe this is their new building, the street building, their office that they're building.
Streets Department. Yes, I'm sorry. Yes.
I'm just asking because there was no note on that building. So I want to know what you want to do.
Yes, they're going to.
And also the last one that we have on here, W H P pumps. Says water invoice twenty twenty-two four three four one six. Where's that? What is that for? Is it for water wells? Is it for valves? Just curious on what it's, what we're looking at, what it's for.
I believe that's for their water wells. I can go back and look that up and get back to you on that because I'm not.
Yeah, I just like to know which water wells we're working on. The ones that are fixing up. So I think we'll do the same one over and over and over.
Water well nine and thirteen? Number thirteen.
We actually got number eighteen back to the surface.
Very good.
Friday.
And that completed the discussion of the days. We have sixteen out of eighteen, is that, or was that number seven?
I think that's seventeen. We have one that's not operational, two.
Two. We got well thirty-one, it's out of service. And well number seventeen, that's out of service. That we know for sure. I talked to Bernard today and he said he's going to hold off till he gets further destruction. I guess, Commissioner, that is the mayor. Because we have plumbing issues and our biggest issue is that the valve ain't working. And we can't shut the valves, the main lines, so we can't repair the discharge side because we need to put in new valves and meters. We've gone out there and tried to shut them off and, you know, we probably have those tanks empty in about six hours. So we just have to leave it with what we've got. But at some point, someone's going to have to commit to shutting the valve or a valve, I would say, at least three hours. So we can put in the valves and then we can start working on putting in the check valves and the meters that the state requires us to have. We've put, we've replaced some that we could, but we have about six that we know that we just can't shut off. We've turned it off the main and then valve inside the building itself, I'll call the board. And check valve big hole. So it's pretty costly. It's just being able to shut it off would be a great thing. Figuring out the breakpoint that we could shut these wells in, having the tank full, got three hours to get this job completed. Nothing we can do. It's just a matter of when the water department would have time for that. So I guess Bernard was going to have to get to the manager and decide, you know, what'd be a good day now that, now that the temperatures are starting to increase, we may have to put that off to the fall or something. Because they're requiring water. We have plenty of water. It's just a matter of, to give it to where these will be.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, what we're trying, we have that grant, capital grant, that's three hundred and forty thousand. We want to utilize that money. I'll follow up tomorrow, see the timeframe for that, to utilizing that money. If it's going to be an extended amount of time, we'll continue to move forward with what Mr. Treel said. I will meet with Bernard this weekend. We'll take care of it. I just, that money's sitting there and I just want to use it. I know we have some COVID funds, but it's just a matter of sitting down with everyone and saying, okay, what's the timeframe here? And that Cat Rotley fund is going to take a little bit more time, but then we'll go and plan the COVID funds. You know?
Seeing that you're going to be meeting with them, I don't want to open up a can of worms for them anyways. Well, number five, what's going on with that?
Well, number five?
Right. If you can find out.
I'll find out. We'll meet. Well, number five?
I don't know anything about it.
Well, I'll find out.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions, discussion? All right, we have motion, second, to approve paying accounts payable. Shannon, roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to go into section, section ten dash fifteen dash one in M S A nineteen seventy-eight subsection eight-two regarding limited personnel matters, city manager evaluation.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.